I'd like to call to order this work session of the Southampton Town Board on this twenty first day of October twenty twenty one. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to your republic. For which is standing. One nation.
Under which stands indivisible.
One nation. With liberty and justice for all. Alright, please be seated. Okay, um, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly Supervisor Schneiderman.
Here.
Councilwoman Laufstad.
Here.
Councilwoman Martel.
Here.
Councilwoman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilwoman Skivoni.
President.
Alright, we're all here, so um. We're gonna start with the. Review of the agenda for the upcoming meeting. This would be the October. Twenty sixth meeting. So the meeting is going to happen, um. Hold on a second. Where did it go? Here we go. Alright, it'll be October twenty six, six P M. It will be via Zoom. And. We have uh five public hearings scheduled, the first being on the twenty twenty two budget. The preliminary budget. The second is to consider any increase proposed in the maximum amount to be expanded annually in the town of Southampton special districts. The third is to consider the sale of four oh six Mill Road, West Hampton. The fourth is public here to consider local law amending chapter three thirty zoning. On the Southampton Town Code. With the addition of Article fourteen Cultural Resources Protection. Overlay District. The fifth is a public hearing on the proposed recipients of the twenty twenty two Community Development Block Grant Program. So those are the five public hearings. Any questions on those? Okay, then we get to the Town Board Resolutions. Uh, the first one, I'm offering three eight five eight two. It authorizes department heads to execute. Program Support Service Agreements under one thousand dollars.
Town Board Resolution ID three eight five seven zero authorized paving at the Highway Department using the Suffolk County contract. With Delallo Cone uh Coal and Stone Company Incorporated.
Alright, the next one, three eight six two nine authorized printing and mailing of calendars using Southampton Public Schools contract. The Courier Printing Corporation. That's great. That's for the C P F. Calendar. And a couple of you sponsoring that with me. Tommy John, you're next.
ID number three eight five seven nine. Yeah, this is to recall and rescind Resolution twenty twenty one nine fifty one. On Town Board Resolution three eight six two zero, this is to authorize a supervisor.
Do you know what that resolution is that's being rescinded and why?
Um, sorry, I do not.
Okay. Maybe we can get that information.
It's to authorize a supervisor into an agreement with uh for uh C C S I for email upgrade.
Okay, from last meeting, okay. Uh, thank you. Town Board Resolution three eight six two zero authorized supervisor to execute a five year maintenance and support renewal agreement with Harris Govern.
Town Board Resolution ID three eight five nine four authorize a supervisor to sign an agreement with East End Food Institute.
Sunday, I'd like to be co-sponsor on that. Julie, this is a fantastic program.
They're doing great stuff.
Yeah, helps our farmers too. Okay.
Um Board Resolution three eight six two three. To authorize a supervisor to sign a contract extension for private or municipal markets for the disposal and recycling services for mixed paper and corrugated cardboard.
Town Board Resolution three eight six two six authorized supervisors sign D P P with Toshiba for copy machines from Eastern Suffolk Bosse's. Contract. Good shared services there. Town Board Resolution three eight six two two authorized supervisor to renew the town's maintenance agreement with Print Logic Incorporated. F K A Max Vault LLC for Max Cloud and Max Clerk. Town Board Resolution three eight five seven six authorized supervisor to execute an amendment with Tyler Technologies Incorporated to provide staff familiar. With assessment updates, hearings and small claims assessments against the town.
Town Board Resolution ID three eight six one two is to authorize the purchase of a community benefit unit located at two oh three Ariway East Quag. And a general fund loan to the Affordable Housing Opportunity Program of Fund, I'm sorry.
Um, Town Board Resolution three eight six two seven, I'd like to uh make a a motion to. Amend actually or to alter amend this resolution and in the first where as worse, excuse me, first whereas. The word advantage should be just stricken from the resolution.
Yeah, so we don't have to do this as an amendment, just let's fix it.
Okay. This is just. Alright, alright, right, we're going through this. And then in the first resolve, uh, the same thing where it says Civic Plus Advantage. That advantage should be stricken as well.
Alright. Sunday, you got it?
Alright.
We're taking, we're taking away any advantage in the resolution. Sorry for the pun.
Yes.
Right?
Okay, so which by the way, authorize the supervisor to execute a contract extension with Civics Plus Advantage for a hosting agreement with with the town's website, I.
Um, so. The advantage in the title comes out too, right? Tommy John?
I, you know what? That would make sense. Um, that's not the notes that I have here. Uh. But we will make that change before it gets onto the floor, but what it should do.
Yeah, I think it's just.
The advantage in the title for now?
No, I take it out.
Okay.
It's clearly, clearly supposed to come out.
Okay. Alright.
Alright, Julie, you're next.
Okay, Town Board Resolution ID three eight six three seven authorize the supervisor to execute agreements with Sun T Sun twenty T V lenders for production assistance.
Town Board Resolution ID three eight six two fives and authorize the supervisor to sign any and all agree. For award of Community Preservation Fund Water Quality Improvement Project Funds.
Sunday, could I be added to that, please? Town Board Resolution ID three eight five seven eight, the twenty twenty one notice to bidders, maintenance, installation, repair of water mains and hydrants. Town Board Resolution ID three eight six three five. Twenty twenty one notice to bidders at Savakias Water Main Crossing, Shinnecott Canal, at Machut Beach and Ponquag Beach at Lighthouse Road.
I think we skipped one.
A reso on page twenty. Three eight six one four.
Hold on, that was just three eight five seven eight, right?
No, the one that that Rick just read.
Three eight.
My apologies.
The, the previous one we hadn't read, we just skipped over.
Which one? So we did.
Three eight. Yeah, three eight six one four.
That's about the ones.
Tommy Johns.
That's the next one. We did three eight six two five, which Rick I think joined as a co-sponsor. Then the next one was. Three eight five seven eight. That was the Savakias. Oh no, that was the uh installation.
Right.
And, oh, then we skipped three eight six one four, right? Okay, got it.
Yeah.
That was Councilman Skivonis. Tommy John, you ready to that?
Three eight six one four, this is the twenty twenty one Notice to Bidders for Printing of Tickets, Pads and Envelopes.
Town Board Resolution ID three eight six three five, twenty twenty one Notice to Bidders for Savakias Water Main Crossing, Shinnecott Canal. At Machut Beach and Ponquag Bridge at Lighthouse Road. My apologies, Tommy John.
Ah, it's all good. Uh, Sunday, I'd like to be added to that, please. It's exciting.
Okay.
Town Board Resolution ID three eight six one seven, twenty twenty one Notice Propusers R F P A License Agreement for the Operation of a Boat Provision Shop and Fuel Station at Conscience Point Marina.
Um, uh, Julie, I'm gonna ask that we um amend the date on this resolution. R F Ps are normally um collected. And the deadlines are usually on Thursdays. And uh rather than the Wednesdays, because we already have three bids at the same time going. Um, and I'd also like to um push the date, uh, the time back out where it used to be. Um, pre pandemic, back to four o'clock, so it's end of the day. Um, for the R F Ps. We, we're having difficulty during pandemic collecting the mail and getting, making sure that the R F Ps were getting in the door on time and that has.
So you want it to be received by what day, Sunday?
December second at four P M.
So Thursday, December second at four P M. Julie, you're okay with that?
I'm fine.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we don't have to amend it, we just change it.
Yes, but we're changing it now, that's why.
Alright, it's, you're, you're all, all good then? Alright, I'll move on. Three eight five eight seven amends the twenty twenty one budget for various departments. That was keeping there, three eight six three eight. Authorize the continued study of, oh, we need to discuss this. Authorize the continued study of market trend analysis and full valuation impacts on the assessed valuation of real property within the town of Southampton and suspend. The application of same in particular circumstances for additional year. This is the next item on our work session today. What to do? So I put together a resolution. Based on uh my recommendation, um. That we extend the freeze that's in place for an additional year. While we continue to collect data. And uh, and we continue to lobby Albany for some mechanisms that will buffer the impacts of full fair market value. And uh, so anyway, uh, we'll, we'll discuss that at at work session, but uh, this would then give our sole assessor some direction. Um, three eight six one one authorized Community Preservation Fund Tax Refund pursuant to the first time home buyers exemption. For uh Javier Darwin Ramirez, Santi and Lizette. Uh, Seguenza San Martin. Got through that. Uh, three eight six three two authorized Community Preservation Fund Tax Refund pursuant to the first time home buyers exemption for Tyler Smith. Uh, three eight six one three authorized C P F first time home buyers exemption for Ivan Stapen. Um, and uh, Matuse Sabstak. I'm doing my best on some of these names here. John, you're next.
Town Board Resolution ID three eight six two one authorized supervisor to sign an application. With the Suffolk County Department of Health Services as it relates to the subdivision map of Edge of Woods Parkside North Sea. Town Board Resolution ID three eight five nine nine release maintenance bond in connection with the site plan of twenty River uh River Lee LLC Riverside.
Okay, three eight four four six accepts retirement of Lisa Dunlap Legislative Secretary in Trustees. Now, we're. That's a. We're sorry to see Lisa go. She's been great, but uh. Certainly has earned her retirement. Um. Three eight five seven seven, another retirement accepts retirement of Dennis O'Rourke, Chief Building Inspector and Land Management. Uh, so we've got some uh big shoes to fill. Uh, three eight five seven four accepts resignation of Heather. Zakowski Senior Office Assistant at Town Clerk's Office. Three eight five eight one appoints uh Mark Redmond, Assistant Town Attorney.
Nick Redmond.
Sir, I'd like to be added to that resolution.
Okay. Sunday, you got that?
I do, thank you.
Three eight five one four appoints Brittany Benton to Custodial Worker Two position at Police Department. Three eight four eight six appoints Joe Gallo, Joseph Gallo to Heavy Equipment Operator Position Waste Management. Thirty seven two oh four points Alexander. Romantit, Romanich to Heavy Equipment Operator Position Waste Management. Three eight four eight five appoints Kimberly Phillips to Office Assistant Position in Town Clerk's Office. Three eight six one nine appoints Patrick Daniels to Sanitation Helper Position in Municipal Works Waste Management Division. Three eight four nine zero appoints Lynn Nihilus to Youth Service Coordinator Position in Youth Bureau. And John, you're next.
Town Board Resolution ID three eight five five seven is a notice of public hearing to accept a deed of residual fee from Blair K Gaza. For properties to be maintained as open space located at West Hampton pursuant to Southampton Town Code two forty four dash four obtaining a development rights certificate. And chapter two forty seven General Municipal Law of the State of New York. Town Board Resolution ID three eight five five eight is a notice of public hearing to accept a deed of residual fee from Mary DeCarlo. Vincent DeCarlo and Patricia DeCarlo for property to be maintained as open space located at West Hampton. Pursuant to Southampton Town Code, Chapter two forty four dash four obtaining a development rights certificate. And Chapter two forty seven General Municipal Law of the State of New York.
Alright, the next one's somewhat interesting. Three six, I'm sorry, three eight six three three accepts the transfer. And gift of a portion of a former Nassar Count Council of Girl Scouts property Hampton Bay's. To the Community Preservation Fund Program. So we're basically, we are transferring it from the. The general fund, which is us, to the Community Preservation Fund. Which is also us. Uh, this is the old caretaker's cottage. That um through the years hasn't been taken care of, basically. It was a. It's fallen into disrepair because I guess different uses were proposed and nothing ever moved forward on it. And uh, I think it's a good. Uh, you know, good, a, a, a good ending sort of to that property to have it become part of the park there. There's a sixty acre park there. And uh. That is my suggestion. If we don't do this, then we can look again to see other options, but uh. You know, it was originally thought to be affordable housing, but uh. It, it seems like that has never moved forward, so. The next one, three eight six ten amends the town of Southampton Community Preservation Project Plan and C P F Management and Stewardship Plan to include. The Joneses' property in Hampton Bay's and authorize acquisition.
Town Board Resolution ID three eight five seven two, so road review application for Weinstein and Ball. Uh, tax map indicated on the resolution situate at Shittcock Hills is accepted.
Uh, three eight five nine oh. Adopt final scope for the preparation of a draft environmental impact statement. D E I S for the zone change application entitled. Concern for Independent Living. Proposing a change from R twenty to multifamily. Number forty four. And an increase in residential density pursuant to three thirty dash eight to enable twelve units per acre. In order to construct a sixty unit. Supported housing development that is. One hundred percent affordable in the Hamlet of Tucker Hope. And um, are there? There are add-ons. I was hoping to have an add-on. I don't think it got put together yet. Um, but we can do it as a walk-on. Let me just explain, it is. It is sort of on our agenda. Oh, no, it's not on our agenda. I was gonna talk about it in, in updates, but let me just take a moment to. Um, tell you about it. And. So I got a call yesterday from Martyrs Landscaping. They had given a proposal to the Nathaniel Rogers folks um. To do, you know, the landscaping around it. It's a. Five hundred and ninety thousand dollar proposal for labor and plants. And uh, I spoke with Charlie Marty yesterday and he informed me that he would be willing to donate the whole thing. Um, five hundred ninety thousand dollars worth of labor and material to Nathaniel Rogers. So um, I want. I wanted to get a resolution in the packet to accept that. So we'll do it.
This includes trees, correct? This is, he's donating.
Oh, it's a lot, yeah, it's trees.
Plantings all around in Nathaniel Rogers' house, right?
There's a whole list in his uh, the proposal that he gave to the museum. Of all the various species, but it, it gives us time to, oh, Lisa's away. Um, you know, we can, we can make it subject to her. Final approval, but I'd like to be able to accept that gift. So if, if everybody's. Okay with it, we can work out the details, but I don't want to turn away a almost six hundred thousand dollar donation, so.
I'd like to co-sponsor it as well, Supervisor.
Alright, thank you. Everybody good with that?
Uh, good with that, except I do agree that you need to be sure that C P F can accept that.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll have to get that information all by Tuesday. Charlie's invited us to uh. I don't have a time, but he's trying to do, Charlie Marty said he could meet the board there on Friday. Um. So we can do like a photo op or whatever. So I, I just don't know the time yet, but tomorrow at some point. We can visit the property and he can talk a little bit about. What the plans are. Alright, um, I'll let you guys know when I have a time for that. He, he just tried to call me a little while ago, but we're already in the meeting. Alright, so is there anything else that, any other questions or any other add-ons? Alright, so we're good to publish? Alright, Sunday?
Excellent, thank you.
Alright, let me close that. Alright, so. We're a little bit ahead of schedule. I, you know, I mentioned this. Next topic already, and I see our sole assessor, uh, Lisa Gory is, is here with us, so. If it's okay with you, let's go ahead and. And move on. Um, is Kathleen Murray coming into this too?
I think she's looking to come in now, but I'm, I'm here also, I can, I think I can. You know, Kathleen's in a couple of meetings.
Coming in, she's coming in. Let me provide a little, little bit of background reminder to the board, but also for the public's certification, so. Um, you know, the town of Southampton is one of very few towns that use a system of full fair market appraisal. So we try to figure out what your property is worth. And then we uh, we multiply the tax rate by it to determine how much taxes you pay with the theory that. Everybody pays a fair share. The more. If you want lower taxes, if you buy a, if your property's worth less, you'll pay lower taxes. So some communities. People with higher valued properties pay lower property taxes. They pay. More than others to help support the, the roads and the parks and the police, et cetera. So Southampton years ago. Um, put this system in place and. For the most part, i- it's probably been a, a pretty good system, but we became aware of some. Impacts to some of our retirees on fixed income. Who were living in areas where property values were going up faster than other areas. And uh, and it's very hard when everybody's property value goes up by ten percent. There's really no impact on taxes. It's, it's really, you know, because the tax rate. It's adjusted downward. Some properties go up faster than others. Um, it, it definitely could impact their, their taxes. So. Uh, two years ago, we placed a freeze. We said we would no longer for the next two years do a. Um, what we call market trend analysis where we adjust it based on the sales. We would only adjust it based on work you did to your property. So if you added a garage. Um, in addition, you built a new home. We would capture that, adjust your value. And it obviously then your taxes are affected by that new valuation. Um, meanwhile, we put together a committee to look for mechanisms, ways that we could potentially buffer. Those impacts and hold on to. The basic equity of our system, you know, the higher your value, the more you pay. So the, the committee recommended two things. It recommended a. Um. A limit to how much your property could be adjusted in a given year, uh, a limit of five percent. Uh, based on market trends, so it might take a few years to catch up. Um. And then we also recommended a homestead exemption of anyone with a star, you know, year round property here. Would get a fifty thousand dollar. Um, reduction in their assessed valuation for tax purposes. And that could really hope, help. On a percentage basis, the lower valued houses would see the biggest percentage decrease. Um, so we asked Assemblyman Thiel to carry those in Albany. Um, he was not successful in getting them passed, uh, not yet. Um, though, um, you know, he has informed me that. You know, he'd like to, you know, to try again, potentially reintroduce him. He is Chair of the Local Governments Committee. He's in a very powerful position, so. Um. At this point, you know, we have been collecting data uh. Throughout the town, though we're not done. And um. You know, there, there are some consequences for, as I said earlier, you know, I'd like to recommend that we extend the freeze one more year. Um, and finish collecting the data and take another shot at getting these bills through Albany. Um, there are, you know, there are some potential consequences that Lisa can go over with us. Um. Kathleen and I and Lisa participated in a meeting with uh, somebody from State Orps, uh, the Office, Office of Real Property Services. Um, yesterday. Um, you know, there, there, there are some potential downsides. Um. If we end up too far away from full fair market value. Um, but there's also some potential positives that I'm also exploring. I, I can't tell you yet. Um, you know, one of the things that Councilman Skivoni has. Uh, questioned um about the school aid and the impacts of equalization rates on school aid. Which is something I'm trying to get a clear answer on. So it might actually be an advantage. Uh, it, it, this, the equalization rate is in the formula I've learned for school aid. And to figure out, I just don't know how big of a factor it is. So it may be that. Um, you know, school districts like Hampton Bay's um. And. Could actually benefit. East Quag. Could actually see some benefits through it, so we don't know yet, so I'd like to find that out as well. But anyway, so that's a pretty, pretty thorough introduction. I'm sorry if I'm taking away anybody's uh steam here, but. Um. But there is a resolution uh in the packet. To direct Lisa to uh. Go one more year, basically amend the work plan to not. Do the reassessment for twenty twenty two, is it, or twenty twenty two? So uh, with that, let me, Lisa, I know I probably left a few things out. Do you want to take it from there?
Uh, sure. Um, good morning, um, everybody. Um, so just to um. Speak a little further on the suspension. Of the reassessment for twenty twenty two, as everyone knows, and Jay mentioned, the freeze that we had in, in twenty nineteen. You know, to take a look at the, you know, the impact of the reassessment and possible ways to, you know, implement. Um, some, some changes in, in the reassessment process. Um, well, within that two year interim, we know that the pandemic kind of threw a monkey wrench into everything. Um, so. Uh, kinda, you know, the, the volume of the sales increases increased as well as the, you know, the sale prices. So um. That, you know, basically, um. We, we saw a lot of changes um that would have come forth, you know, with the twenty twenty two reassessment and. We brought in a, an appraisal consultant, you know, to assist us with some of our ratio studies and other statistics. And, you know, what we were looking at were, you know, probably gonna be some, you know, significant increases, you know, a, a, across the, across the town. Um, so, you know, like Jay said, we met yesterday. And out of the discussion that we had with the consultant, Tom Donato, myself, Kathleen. Jay and our regional manager for. Um, it was determined that um at least for twenty twenty two to suspend the reassessment. Um. So, but what I, I just wanna, you know, make, make clear is that. Uh, the freeze that we did in twenty nineteen. Carried some of those assessments forward for the interim two years through twenty twenty one. Um, this suspension. Um. Some folks may not see those assessments being carried forward because there are some reductions that uh or court ordered reductions. Um, that have specified terms. Um, so they would set to expire. So if you had a reduction in twenty nineteen, a SCAR reduction. Um, so they would set to expire. So if you had a reduction in twenty nineteen, a SCAR reduction. Um, that reduction is set to expire, so you will not see that carry forward on the twenty twenty-two roll. Because I am obligated, you know, to make certain changes on the roll. So, um, there may be some folks who will see a change in their assessment, but it will not be a market change. Um, and we'll also, you know, make physical changes as we always do, new construction renovations, any missing inventory. You know, that we may have captured. So, um, so that, that's basically it. You know, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna. Um, you know, suspend the reassessment for twenty twenty-two. We'll take a look at it throughout the year and. And we'll see what happens, you know, going forward with twenty twenty-three.
Lisa, will our constituents have the ability to apply for, uh, their star exemption in twenty twenty-two?
Oh, yes, yeah, the, the start, none, none of the exemptions go away. Everyone can still, you know, you'll still have your exemptions. The only thing that may have an effect on the exemption is now because. Um, we are suspending the reassessment and in those interim years, like I said, the pandemic kind of, you know. Changed, changed everything a little bit. So we, we had the, uh, we were fortunate to maintain a hundred percent market value. During those interim two years, but because of the escalated sale prices now. Um, our analysts did find that. Right now, we are probably at least eighty-five, eighty-seven percent below market value. So that's where that equalization rate will come into play. And some of the exemptions will have to be calculated based on that equalization rate as well.
Well, right now, we haven't, we're at one hundred percent.
For twenty, for the twenty twenty-one assessment role, yes, we, we, we were fortunate to maintain a hundred percent.
So our equalization rate is basically one. It does, there's no correction in our values. So for certain things like, uh. Like a school district that goes from town to town, like it's, you know, like, uh. Eastport South Manor, you know, or Sag. Sag Harbor District, uh.
And Riverhead.
And Riverhead, right, exactly. So when, when they collect the taxes from those properties, they need to make everything equal. So if one town is in full value. They have to. Take the value and multiply it by the equalization rate to get it to match, so that they can apportion the taxes fairly. Um, we've had, they didn't have to multiply us by anything. Ours, now, now we run the risk that we will have an equalization rate if we're. If everybody's basically eighty-five percent of their full fair market value. We have to add that extra fifteen percent back, uh, so that you can compare the two towns. Uh, so, but there, you know, if properties, let's say east of the canal went up. By ten percent and property, well, let's say west of the canal went ten percent and east of the canal went up twenty percent. With the equalization rate is townwide. They look at the whole thing. They don't look at one area versus another. So when you add it all together, we might be off by fifteen percent, even though one area is ten percent off and another area is twenty percent off. But that may actually have a benefit to west of the canal school districts. Um. Because when they do that adjustment, they'll be lowering those property values. In a way more than they might have otherwise. It's a little complicated.
It is. And by the way, the three municipalities, Riverhead, Brookhaven and East Hampton all have multipliers currently. I mean, that should be stated, you know. So we're not, we wouldn't be. You know, we're, we're more the exception, you know, than the norm in New York State.
Yeah. It's clear that some areas did go up. Quite a bit. Uh, particularly residential properties. I, I don't know about commercial. I don't think commercial has gone up as much as residential properties. It's, I think relatively flat. Um. But, you know, then we'll have, if everybody's okay with this decision to extend for one more year. You know, then we, we see what happens in Albany. Um, if we are able to get those mechanisms, and it's not. Outrageous to ask for these mechanisms. Other communities have. Tax laws that are, um, catered to their own particular situations. I think Assening is one of those areas. Um, it's not. I, you know, it is not a ridiculous request. We're a unique community in terms of, uh. You know, the higher, yeah, super high valued properties in some areas of town or, you know, summer resident population. Um, Albany could give us these tools and I, I think we should continue to ask for them, but if we, if we don't get them. Um, you know, we'll have that, again, a difficult decision whether we, uh. If, if, if we were to reset property values without these mechanisms. Everybody's gonna go up at least ten percent, right? Lisa, we're seeing. The lowest areas go up by like twelve percent and, uh. The highest area is probably twenty or more percent. So.
Well, well, right now, at least based on. Based on the consultant's analysis, at least everyone would potentially, if we were to. You know, go ahead with the reassessment right now. We're looking at least, at least ten percent, possibly as high as fifteen, yes.
And that's on the assessment, not the taxes. It's just on.
Right, the assessment, the assessment, correct.
Le- Lisa and I, yesterday, we talked about, well, could we, if we just were to, across the board, increase everything ten percent. It wouldn't have an impact on taxes. It would just lower the tax rate. Everybody would have the exact same ratio to each other, but the problem is like, we'd have to send everybody a letter. Um, it's trying to explain. What's going on and I, we thought it would be very confusing to people.
I believe that it would, and it also, we cannot, we cannot control what the school districts set for their tax rates. As well as the fire districts too, but re- I mean, really, you know, the, the, the major contributor to our tax bill are the school districts. So, you know, depending on the tax rate by the school districts in the individual school districts. You know, if we just do a, a blanket ten percent increase, that will have different effects throughout the town.
Right.
We need to.
It would, it would keep us from having the equalization rate issue. But it would be very confusing, I think, to the homeowner. So I, I would rather take a chance on having an equalization rate. Which actually. I don't know yet, my, you might be right, Councilman Skivoni, it actually may help some of our school districts get more state aid, so. I'm, uh, I'm gonna get an answer to that question. So.
I, I, I certainly hope so. And, you know, I look at the districts in Brookhaven and, and the amount of state aid that they're getting, and I've also reviewed their. Uh, property value assessments for the districts and it just, you know, I, I want to give our state legislators as much. Uh, possible to help get this aid back to our school districts to help stabilize our.
Yeah, it's hard to understand why similar school districts. Why they, why ours gets so much less in state aid.
Mm-hmm.
A- and it could, it could be the equalization rate. You might be onto something there, so I, I don't know yet. But it's definitely worth exploring.
Right. I, I mean, I, I've, I've said this and I've been pretty public about it, you know, I believe it's our hundred percent market. Value and then the value of the entire town, the assessment of the town compared to districts throughout the state. That's really who we're. Uh, competing with for state aid, um, that, you know, makes it difficult to, to bring that, that money, those monies, uh, back to Long Island here.
Yeah.
I have a quick question. Um, just in the title of the REZO in the draft agenda, it says, uh. The, the end of the REZO says suspend the application of same in particular circumstances. What does that mean? Does that mean, I mean, we're, we're discussing now it's gonna be for everybody, so what would those particular circumstances be?
So, um, good morning, Councilwoman Lobsted. Um, initially, the suspension was, um, not for. Um, an increase in your assessment if you had new construction additions, alterations or improvements to your property. Um, so notwithstanding those circumstances, um, you would have this suspension of the assessment. And so that, those same parameters are proposed to be extended.
Okay, thank you.
Um, alright, any, any other questions? E- everybody okay with the one-year extension? Now, do we have to hold a hearing on that? No, right? We just do it.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, you know, I think everybody, you know, they're gonna look at their tax bills and they're gonna see. Their assessment. Um, next year, they'll see that their value has not gone up. Um, but they may also see an equalization rate may start to appear on these, uh. Uh, I think it's probably on there now, but it's a hundred percent. So then you'll have to adjust it. To understand the value a little bit better. Lisa, could you explain that, uh, if, if I'm not being clear?
Right, well. Um, with, with the implementation of an equalization rate, let's say we have, um, someone's assessment. Let's just say their full market value is five hundred thousand. That's what we have on the roll as their, as their, um, as their fullest, as their full. Um, uh, appraised value. When we apply a, an equalization rate, let's say we. Tack on a, you know, eighty-seven percent, uh, equalization rate, so that would get multiplied by the appraised value. So their taxable assessment would end up being about four hundred and thirty-five thousand. So that's what they would be taxed on.
The, the, the assessed value will no longer be the, uh, appraised.
Value, right.
But the, the bill typically does the math for you, typically, I think in, in most towns. The, they'll, they'll have the assessed value and they'll have the market value on the bill. The assessed value will not be a reflection of your market value, as, as Lisa mentioned, see. Assessed value will have to be multiplied by the market value, by the equalization rate, and that'll give you. The market value, but that calculation is done on your tax bill, so you, you'll be able to look at, you'll still be able to see what the town. Uh, the, um, uh, feels your market value is. There'll just be a different.
But Jim, the distinction here is every property is gonna have the same equalization rate throughout the town.
Yep.
So whether you're in an area that went up by twenty percent or an area that went up by five percent. It's that same adjustment.
Uh huh.
So.
Right.
When we do the market trend.
Assess value will change. The assessed value from each, from each lot, oh, that'll be the difference.
If we go back to the market trend analysis, then each individual property. Will be more accurately assessed. Right?
Right, it, it, it's. It's a change right in our, um, our tax software, where if we have to apply the equalization rate, let's just say at eighty-five. That, we, we, we take out the amount that's in there right now at a hundred and we just change it to eighty-five, so everyone's assessment. Will be calculated uniformly at eighty-five percent.
Right.
So let's just say it's a reduction in fifteen percent. So if I have a million dollar property. Even though that equalization rate would bring it to. You know, fifteen percent higher than that million. Right, what is, what is that, a, a million, one hundred and fifty thousand? Um. I'll still see the hundred, then I would have to then calculate that additional fifteen percent.
Well, you would.
It'll be on the bill.
It'll be on the bill.
Yeah, the market value will be on the bill. The assessed value.
Taxpayers don't have to calculate it themselves.
No, it's calculated for me on the tax bill.
Yeah, the, the, it just, there'll be a difference between the assessed value and the market value. And, and, and the towns that.
Assessment role right now. On the assessment role right now, it shows the market value and the taxable value. Right now, those numbers are the same. In twenty twenty-two, when we go to equalization, those numbers are gonna be different. So you'll be able to see what your, what your taxable, your, your taxable assessed value is and how it differs. Differs from your, uh, appraised value.
Right.
When does the state issue the, uh, uh, an equalization number? What time of the year?
Probably sometime either in late February or early March.
And currently, our one hundred percent, uh, market valuation to property value is issued in October. Is that correct?
Uh, now, the last one that I got was, it was, it was in August, right after our, uh, final roll.
Okay, so it started to say that the equalization rate would be before the school districts or actually during the time when school districts. Are developing their budgets and then they finalize them in May. So the school districts would have a better idea. As to what their assessments would be for their needs to, to run the school. Currently, the school district set their assessment rates in May, and then we reassess later on in the year, so they kind of. They, they guess essentially what, um, what the final market, uh, hundred percent market value is gonna be for their districts.
Right, what, once I receive the equalization rate, um, e- either in February or March, I. I typically send a notice to the school districts to let them know what their tentative, um, taxable assessments are. I do that every year anyway. So the only thing that'll change is that I'll just plug in what the equalization rate is along with it.
Well, but that'll be done before they set their budgets in May.
That'll be done.
The final market analysis is done later on in the year.
I sent, I send them their notices, their tentative notices, the first, usually the first week of April.
Okay, so the tentative notice, are you, are you saying that the tentative notice? I don't mean to be, I, I just need to like, get clarity on this. The tentative notice, are they always the same as the market value evaluations that are determined in August?
They, they have been. They have been in the past, up, up until twenty twenty-two, yeah.
And will we be giving school districts a heads up, um, that we're changing things? So they know ahead of time, even though they might not know the exact numbers, they'll know that something may be changing.
I will be notifying the school districts as well as the villages.
Right. And I'm, I'm willing to bet that, that, they're paying attention to this, this is. Yeah.
I really shouldn't change your overall pot of money, you know, it just.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it just changes. The calculation. Typically, other towns, your assessment, if you're in the towns up west. Your assessment, unless you do something to the, to the, to your house, it's, assessment's static. It stays. It can, it can stay the same for thirty-five years. The equalization rate changes every year, so, so your, your town market value will change from year to year, but you're. And that would, that'll be reflected in your final tax bill. But the, your assessment.
And that system is problematic, Jim. I, I really believe that there needs to be a state fix, you know, like, rather than having municipalities. Go one hundred percent market value, you know, patchwork throughout the state, and by the way, there's very few of us. But if the state were to require it from all towns and, you know, all cities in the state of New York, it would keep that. Playing field level for, for state funding for schools and, and other municipalities.
Right, it would be, yeah, and that's a pretty heavy lift at this point, probably for most towns, but, but I agree with you.
Well, with, with the, with the exception, well, i- in Suffolk County, we were. Shelter Island and Southampton, we were the only two towns that did the annual reassessments. Um, upstate New York, most of the towns up there, they do do annual reassessments. None of their towns are as large as, you know. The townships down here, there, but, um, there are very few towns. Upstate that do not conduct, so. We'll, we'll be one of the, uh, minority towns now.
But the value of properties in those communities probably don't shift very much.
They, they, yeah, they're very, um.
Pretty static.
They don't, they don't have, they, they don't have the population that, that we do down here. Um, they don't have, you know, the.
Versus inland.
Right, right. Their, their, their values change very little.
Yeah, probably unless maybe on the, on the Finger Lake regions, maybe some areas, Canada or something like that, where you might skinny Alice might have some valuation.
Mm-hmm. So.
Change in valuation.
So to go back to this idea that state aid may be related to this. Because there's, you know, there's millions of dollars in state aid that get handed out to school districts. And if we're prejudiced. Because we're at full market value, so if you had, let's say, two identical towns. Let's say this one's worth, say they're both worth a hu- a hundred million dollars in assessed valuation. This one's at full value and this one is at half of it. So this one's going in with a hundred million dollars in property. This one's going in with fifty million dollars in property. If they're not fully correcting because the equalization rate is a minor part of the formula. It looks like this one with the ha- the five, the, the fifty million dollars in property. Looks like they should get more money than the hundred million dollars in property, and that is a concern. We've been doing the right thing in terms of keeping us at a hundred percent, but it might be hurting us. In terms of this, I haven't seen the school aid formula. All I was told yesterday is it's very complicated. And that equalization rate is. All I was told yesterday is it's very complicated and that equalization rate is in there, but prob- possibly a minor component, in which case we're being prejudiced. So we need to figure that out, and that could be millions of dollars. So although, you know, we may have now an equalization rate in a school district, it actually might work to our benefit in terms of getting additional money into the school district, which then pushes everybody's property taxes down. So I, I think it's worth finding out. I think it's, it's definitely interesting. It's a, I don't even know where to get the formula. So I can't analyze it till I have this formula. Tommy John, do you know how to get this?
Yeah, the state, the state has it and it is.
Yeah, we'll have to talk to Ops and, and, you know, we can try to figure that out.
Can you get it?
Probably looking at the town to east would probably be a good example. See what, you know, sit down with, sit down with East Hampton and see, you know, they're very similar town to ours.
I mean, your observation, Tommy John, is that the schools that the districts that have full valuation don't get as much as the districts that are off in terms of their valuation, correct?
That's right. And, and, you know, not all the districts in the town of Southampton are, um, let's put it this way, I think we have districts that, that are similar to other districts around Long Island. And I look at the state aid numbers and, and they're just not even in the same league as far as the amount of money that's uh, being brought down from the state for the school districts. And I believe that it's this 100% market valuation to assessment or assessment to a market valuation that is, is, is skewing the number for state aid for those districts.
Give me an example, like, do you know, like, how much Hampton Bays gets versus?
Yes, Hampton Bays gets about $7 million, and I know that they do an excellent job with grant writing and, you know, they're, they're doing what they need to do for their student. And then, uh, there's a, a district like Miller Place gets $23 million. Um, Center Mariches gets $13 million. And, you know, so to me, that's, you know, that, that, that's significant. And I look at the communities and, you know, I, I, they're, they're similar communities.
Similar size, right.
Similar size, um, I, I, East Mariches uh, and, and East Quogue, I believe, are, are similar sized communities. They, they both have an elementary school. Uh, one gets 1.4 million dollars, uh, whereas, uh, the other one gets 6.9 million dollars.
And I'm assuming the 6.9 is the.
Is East Mariches. And, you know, they're literally six miles away from, or a little bit, it's probably more like 12 miles, sorry. Don't mean to get that wrong, but, um, you know, that to me is significant. And, and.
It is.
Yeah, so I'm theorizing that it's this, this market valuation that we do that is, is not giving our, our state legislators the tools that they need to, you know, perhaps, you know, like, let's get more money to some of our schools.
Right, either they fix the formula so that it's fair, or we go and have an equalization rate so that we're not punished by this formula anymore. Right?
Tommy John, have you considered reaching out to Dean LaSara, the superintendent of Bosse's?
I had not considered reaching out to the dean.
Yeah, maybe, maybe he could, you know, offer some insight.
And, um, to do, to do a more of an evaluation, we should absolutely.
Well, maybe he could explain the, you know, the, um, the equalization rate and, you know, what the impact is. Whether a town that does full value versus not full value.
If I, if, if I can get the formula.
Why we do full value, you know, hun- you know, why was this instituted uh, in Southampton Town? Um, you know, and, and I think, I think that is, would give us some guiding documents, you know, like, and I, I've heard it, I've heard reasons why here, and I'm just, you know, wondering, uh, you know, why it's imperative for us to do this.
Yeah, I mean, I've heard all sorts of different kinds of reasons, and I, it, uh, one reason was the size of our districts, that we have multiple districts and sort of those kinds of comparisons were met. But one statement that, what, that always sort of sticks with me that I heard a couple of years ago was that the formulation is based on need. And that, that's a vague term in terms of, of allocating funds. You know, and who makes that determination and who has a more important need? And I think it's, it's, it's somewhere in there, uh, and I'd really love to see it. I agree with you supervisor. We've asked for this a couple of times and have never gotten it. So I don't know if it's as easy to get and, and, and there is sort of a weird sort of a vagueness on the determination in the, in, in that system. That's what I, I was told. I, I, no reason to not believe that, but it's, it is complicated. I think it's a sort of a confluence of a whole bunch of these different issues all at once that had to have that impact on it.
Yeah, if we can just get the formula, I could try to crunch the numbers to see how we make out with a equalization rate versus without it. And you know, if I can't do it, and I was a math teacher, you know, but if, uh, if I can't do it, hopefully Len can do it. If not, we'll get some specialist in to do the analysis. Cause I might not have enough of the variables to, to, to crunch the, uh, crunch the numbers. I'll give it a shot, but I need the formula. If, and you know, somebody in Len's office can do this too. And let's, let's do the analysis. Because if we get millions of dollars more in state aid simply because we're at 85%, then we'll, happy to be at 85%.
Yeah, cause I think there's some subjectivity in there. And, you know, that gets, you know, well, that in formulas, that's that, that can be well hidden. And, uh, it, it's hard to find the, the reasoning behind it.
Yeah, it, it could put us at a competitive disadvantage. I don't know. I, 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 I think it's an interesting hunch that we should just get, get the, get the answer to. Because it should go into our calculus as to whether we want to be a full market value or not. If being a full market value deprives our schools of millions of dollars in state aid, what's the point? We're trying to do the right thing by taxing everybody appropriately, but or assessing everybody appropriately.
I, I think part of that has to do with sort of a perception of, going back to what I was saying before, it's a perception of need. And it's inherent, perhaps inherited in that formula. Uh, but the sub-subjectivity of it is how you're defining one school's need against another. And.
If you say that one community, oh, they have so much taxable property, so much assessed valuation compared to another, but you haven't corrected for the equalization rate.
Exactly.
You're not comparing apples to apples now. Yeah, they look like they need more help because they don't, they're not as valuable a community, property wise. But that's only because you haven't fully corrected them.
Jim, do you know the last time that the town of Brookhaven has reassessed their properties?
I don't think they ever have.
Yeah.
So not in recent memory. And, you know, I, I, even, even the, uh, the brains up in Albany, you know, who do these uh, assessments and, and corrections and multipliers to, you know, accurately identify and value the properties in other municipalities compared to what we do here in Southampton.
Yeah. I, 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 I believe, I believe they had some reviews of certain areas of the town. I don't think they've done a townwide one. As far as, I, I don't recall. I was trying to find out that information, but.
Tommy John, did you look at any of the East Hampton school districts?
Uh, not recently, no.
I'd be interested, because they're also an affluent community, but they have not done full fair market value. So they're like at a quarter of value. You gotta multiply the assessment by four, basically, to get to the real number. Um, I'd be interested to see if they're getting more school aid. You know, with the state aid than we are.
Yeah. I'll follow up with their town and I can work with Lisa. Lisa and I have worked with the town with East Hampton in the past. The special counsel is, is an individual who was actually on our review committee, Jim Ryan, who was Brookhaven assessor for, for many, many years. So I can speak to Jim also, uh, about, um, the East Hampton issue. He represents them.
Yeah. All right, um, all right. So everybody okay with the freeze? One more year on the freeze?
Okay with the freeze. Yes.
Julie, John, Rick, everybody okay with the one-year extension? Yeah, I, 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 I think we, it's the right thing to do. I, I certainly did not predict when we put the freeze in place that property values would change as much as they, they did. I thought they might go up a little bit, but they're not, you know, 20% in some areas or even higher than that. So, you know, I, 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 I think by putting the freeze in place, it'll let the market settle out a little bit, give us the, all the data we need, give Albany, you know, another year to try to give us some, uh, sort of common sense protections.
Yeah.
All right.
I agree. I think it, it might capture the real value of the profits. I mean, if we look at it now, I think it might be capturing some type of, uh, unusual spike right now.
Yeah, you might capture an anom- anomaly. Though I don't see property values actually coming down. I, I see the market softening a little bit, but I don't see prices coming down, but I could be wrong. All right, so Kathleen, thank you. Lisa, thank you. Um, and we will move along. So, um, we're gonna do some updates. Let me see what I have. You know, on COVID, this will start with COVID. You know, it's still there. It's still, you know, two people I know just recently tested positive. One. Yeah, that was one of them. And I, he, he, he and I were together though briefly a week ago. I, I'll kind of try to get tested, but, uh, I, it was, we were outdoors and it probably was before he was COVID positive. But, uh, um, it's still there, but you know, we're still at these numbers right around, it's right around 10 cases a day. Which is, you know, assuming a population with everybody out here, you know, at least I'd say 100,000 people, so 10 cases a day. Uh, one case per 10,000 people. And it's still, you know, it's pretty low. But, um, it's definitely, it's still around. Uh, you know, I'll try to get Ryan on at some point. Oh, Ryan's coming on. Maybe we can get the hospital numbers if Ryan has it.
I'm, I'm here supervisor.
All right, great. So, yeah, you saw the county executive tested positive.
Yes, yes, I did.
So.
Yeah, I, I actually, um, I don't have a, any more current hospital numbers for you at this time. I'll reach out to both of them just to see, but um, I'm really kind of hoping no news is, is good news. We had been checking in with them pretty regularly and I, I do honestly feel that if there was any kind of, you know, significant jump, we have very, very, especially between, you know, I know you, you also keep in touch with them. Um, between the two of us, I think we would have heard something from Robert or somebody else over at the hospital if they had any kind of significant jump compared to what we had been seeing. Uh, so I think their numbers are probably holding, you know, the same, if not have improved. And as you mentioned, the, um, the spread rate in the town, I just looked at it again for the last two days, uh, this morning. Um, and we're, we're holding pretty strong, um, to, to that 10, or in fact, the other day, I know I shot you, you an email, um, because I was pretty happy to be able to report that we were under the, the 10 per day.
I have 9.67, so we're just under 10.
I'm gonna call that nine and, 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 you know, celebrate it and say that it's under 10, uh, because I don't know what a 0.67 person is. So, um.
But that's an average.
We're, we're doing well.
That's for, um, that's on a three-day average, so that's why.
Yeah. We're, we're doing well and those numbers are staying down and, and, you know, let's just hope that the predictions that are out there in the health community right now seem to indicate that they have an expectation that the Delta variant spread should be, um, decreasing. You know, as we proceed into the next couple of months, they're seeing downward trends, you know, nationwide and globally uh, in terms of the spread. Let's hope that continues. And, uh, you know, we also do still just want to throw out there to people that, you know, we're coming up on, on a couple of months' worth of, you know, holiday times, you know, regardless of, you know, religious denominations and everything else. You know, whether it's, whether we're talking Halloween, Thanksgiving, Hanukkah, Christmas, any, any of the, the, the holidays coming up. You know, try and, and be smart about it. Um, we know people want to gather. You know, uh, consider, you know, testing options that might be out there. Consider your family members and different levels of immunity that they may have. And, and let that guide your decisions as far as, you know, mask wearing and the appropriateness of mask wearing in different settings. Um, you know, just continue to be, be safe and prudent with the, you know, actions as we go through these next couple of months. We want that downward trend to continue. We'd like to stay under, under 10. We'd love to hit zero in the town of Southampton again, where we had been, you know, for a brief while there. So, uh, just want to keep people's, you know, minds on this. It's not out of the picture yet. And, uh, you know, boosters too. Consider, you know, getting the booster if you're eligible and, and, you know, if you're waiting till you get closer towards that one-year time. Definitely consider, you know, getting the boosters if recommended by, uh, by CDC and FDA. Um, as far as, you know, eligibility for individuals, because that will also help to, uh, stop the spread. The, the increased immunity levels that you can maintain will decrease your chances of possibly getting COVID and certainly not getting severe impacts from COVID.
All right, thank you, Ryan. Any questions for Ryan on COVID? Uh, this continues to be testing sites in various places, vaccination sites. Southampton Hospital being a place with both, uh, vaccinations and testing. So, um, let me move on to some other updates. So, uh, the pickleball courts over at, uh, the North Sea Complex, you know, by SYS, that area. Um, by our transfer station. So the pickleball courts are finished. Um, they just, uh, they're curing at this point. So they can't be played on till next week, but we do have a, uh, a tentative ribbon cutting scheduled for Tuesday, next week, uh, October 26th, 1:00 PM. All are welcome to attend. Uh, it should be fun. It's sort of right behind the bocce courts. I know you guys have, uh, most of you have been there for, you know, the bocce things that they do there. So it's right, right behind there are the pickleball courts. Uh, and they're beautiful. They came out really well. Um, the police department is participating in National Drug Takeback Day. This is gonna be Saturday, October 23rd. That's the Saturday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So unused medications can be dropped off at the Hampton Bays Community Center, the Flanders Community Center and the Town Police Substation at Bridge Hampton Commons. Uh, if you want more information on the National Drug Takeback Day, uh, you can find it on the town's website. All right, um, early voting for the November 2nd election begins, uh, statewide this Saturday, October 23rd. It continues right up till Halloween, Sunday, October 31st. Um, there is only one location in the town of Southampton. Uh, it's at Southampton, at the campus of Stony Brook University in Southampton. It's, I believe in the Student Activity Center. It, in the past, been in the gym. I think they might be doing some work over there. So, uh, I, I believe it's in the Student Activity Center. If somebody knows something different, let me know. And the times vary from day to day, so you might want to check the town's website uh, for more information on voting times. And then, uh, lastly, there's a free adult flu shot clinic being sponsored by Stony Brook Southampton Hospital. It's being held today. Um, that would be Thursday, the 21st of October. Uh, at the Greek Orthodox Church uh, of the Hamptons. That's right on St. Andrews Road. It's, uh, from noon, so it's already started a few minutes ago. Uh, noon to 8:00 PM this evening. And, uh, there is a flyer with some additional information that is available again on the town's website. So, um, that is it for the moment for updates. Again, we're gonna try to go to the Nathaniel Rogers House tomorrow, when I get the time to, uh, to meet with Charlie Martyr to discuss the plantings that are being donated by martyrs. And, uh, and that, that's it. All right, anybody else have, uh, updates?
Got one.
All right, June?
So I was lucky enough to be asked to tag along on the most recent Honor Flight Long Island. We took nine, uh, World War II vets to DC. Um, the vets were aged 93 to 100. Uh, we went to the World War II Memorial. We went to Arlington. They got to participate um, in the ceremony at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. Everywhere we went, people stood up and clapped. It, it was absolutely beautiful. Um, so, uh, I'd just like to thank the Honor Flight Long Island for all they do and for Jamie Bowden from, um, our community organization specialist. Um, she did a great job in organizing it. From, um, our community organization specialist. Um, she did a great job in organizing it. And if anybody is interested in signing up their veteran to perhaps go on an Honor Flight or want more information, please call Jamie. And her number is 631-702-2423. It was the most, the, the best thing I've ever done in my life.
Wow.
I praise, they did a great job.
Yeah, I've, I've been on that in the past too. It, it really is. Deeply humbling and moving to, to be, you know, in the presence of, you know, what's been called the Greatest Generation. World War II vets. And now they've opened a Korea vets. I think Vietnam vets too can participate too.
Soon, yeah. Yeah, but every one of them said that they are not a hero. They just had to do what they had to do. Uh, like you said, very humbling, but in my book, they're all heroes for sure.
A hundred percent, yeah. My, my, my dad fought in World War II. And, and Korea, but he's no longer with us. We're, we're losing. Unfortunately, that, you know, all those heroes from World War II. They're unfortunately aging out, but.
It's really beautiful what they do though. Like you said, at the, at the airports in MacArthur, then in Baltimore, and then down in DC, it's just. It's just a really special day for, for the veterans.
Absolutely.
It's really nice to have that kind of recognition for that.
Yeah, yeah. But I tell you, at the end of the day, it was a long day. We got home at maybe 11:00 PM or so. Those 93 to 100 year olds were still raring to go and I.
Unbelievable.
My bed.
Right, exactly, right. And it's, it's, yeah.
Hard to imagine. How frightening that must have been those times, you know, you know, we've talked about wars in. You know, Iraq or Afghanistan, but you know, to imagine the world at war. You know, and going in and being, you know, loaded on a plane or boat and, and sent to some faraway land.
And, and most of them were teenagers who just, you know, that one guy landed at Normandy. And he said, I got on a ship and jumped out and there I was. And he was like, 19 years old. It was really just amazing to hear their stories.
Unbelievable. Well, we're all. Not only the better off because of them, but. Who knows if any of us would be here, be living under tyranny, you know, Nazi Germany. I mean, it's, it's hard to imagine what might have been the course if we didn't have all these brave men and women to stand up. You know, for our nation and for, for our world.
Seventy million people died in World War II worldwide.
Unbelievable.
And like I said, that so many of them were just kids, like Julie's saying, nineteen year olds, but. But that was, this gave him a plane and said, here, fly over to Burma, you know, to China, you know, to nineteen years old, these guys.
Yeah.
Flying, you know, transport planes, you know, one day they were, you know, hanging around the Bronx and, you know. Shortly after they're flying them planes over the Himalayas, it's.
Yeah.
Remarkable.
Julie, thank you for all you've been doing for veterans. It's. It's, it's great to have the town have you as our sort of front face. In terms of trying to say thank you to these folks.
Well, and thank you all for your support. There, there, to me, it's so important to, like you said, if, if not for them, then what?
As you can do, I know you, you did the parking for veterans. You did the veterans discount cards. And Honor Flight, um, you know, it's the least we can do, right? But.
Yeah, definitely.
Alright, thank you. And any other updates?
On a little lighter note, there is, uh, Parks and Rec is having their annual Fall Festival this Saturday. From 11 to 3, come down and enjoy magic shows, live music, games, pumpkin carving. You know, it's for all ages, 11 to 3. Hopefully it's a nice day and everybody can relax a little bit and enjoy the weather.
That's great. Could all use a little magic.
And looking, looking.
Be able to make my hand disappear. I don't know. Zoom. Go ahead.
Yeah, through our Youth Bureau, uh, we, we had our third Youth in Government meeting last night. And, uh, our next meeting is gonna be on November 3rd, if anybody's interested, student age, uh, high school age students in being part of this YMCA program. I'd like everyone to cross their fingers. We are gonna have the state convention in March. It's scheduled, it's on. And, uh, you know, I ask everyone to get their vaccines, so it doesn't have to, it had been canceled for the past two years. Uh, we went to Albany, uh, in, in my first year here. And, uh, these, these young people got to present their proposed laws, their bill on the floor of the Assembly in the Senate. So, uh, all of the kids came back, I'm happy to say, and, uh, raring to go. So if there are any young people in our community who are interested in this YMCA program, it's called Youth in Government. Google it, you will see one in every state and testimonies from kids from all over the country and their experiences. A special thanks to the Youth Bureau for putting this on.
Thank you, Tommy John. Uh, anyone else? Alright, let me just take one quick look. Again, see if I have anything else, you know, I have, uh. Another FIMP meeting. The, uh, I don't know Jim, if. Where, where we are with, with FIMP, but. FIMP is this, uh, federal project to rebuild the beaches and elevate homes. And just, we're being asked to do just a tremendous amount. We're gonna get reimbursed, but it's. An extraordinary workload that is, you know. Jim's been working on it, but we're basically being asked to survey. And appraise easements on 500 properties. And I, I, like, I don't even know where to begin. And we're being asked. To do it within a two-year period with some pressure to try to do it in a one-year period and. Jim's been working on it, but. I don't know what resources we're gonna need in terms of surveyors, in terms of appraisers.
Sure.
It's, Jim, do you want to say anything about?
Just, you know, uh, I've been working, I've been trying to go to school a little bit on the county. Um, obviously this is an area that I have some expertise with the combination. We're coming from the Attorney General's Office and. Uh, but, you know, trying to go to school a little bit, the county in their FMI, uh, fire round to Murch's Inlet. Program and trying to see what kind of obstacles they had in there, there, you know, in that portion of, of this project. Kelly and I, Kelly Doyle in my office here, I had a meeting with the Corps, US Corps of Engineers. Cause we, we really haven't even formally got the, the, the maps. The, the properties that we're gonna be doing these easements or takings on yet. When we, we had a good conversation with them, uh, two or three weeks ago. But essentially right now, they put us off till probably the earliest November where we even start talking to them about. Exactly what they're requiring from us. So, but in the meantime, what I've been trying to do is try to get an idea of what, what kind of issues the county had. I met Kelly and I. Um, Gil Anderson, who was the former Commissioner of Public Works for the County, who works with McLean, one of our consultants. Uh, met with the county, uh, we met with the County Real Estate Department, we met with the County Attorney's Office. Uh, I've been speaking with folks in DPW. Uh, also, um, most of the appraisers that we'd have to use, we already have a relationship with. I've dealt with most of the appraisers on open space acquisitions when I was in the county and here. Attorney General's Office on condemnation matters, so I'm familiar. I have a very good working relationship with, uh, all the appraisers and. Probably most of the engineers and supervisors within the D2, but supervisor said it's gonna be a huge undertaking and. You know, once we have a, uh, exact idea about even which properties are involved and, and, and. And what the easements are, then we can start moving ahead, but it's, uh, it's gonna be a minimum with two, two-year process, I'm sure, two, two or three years. Just to get the mappings correctly and then we'll see who challenges and what, what, you know, eminent domain proceedings we'll have to do from there. So it's, uh, it'll probably be in a minimum of a two to, you know, five, five, seven, eight year process when we're all done.
And this, this was created in, in 1957. I mean, this has been talked about my entire life and it was, it's been exciting, um, you know, and now that it's finally funded. Um, I, I hope that there are ways that we can expedite this process, you know, like once we get, like you said, get everything outlined and stuff. You know, if we need to bring in an outside vendor or, or, you know, a con, or, or, you know, whatever needs to happen on this.
Sure.
We've asked the feds for some, what we thought were pretty reasonable. Relief things, like, you know, we. We don't understand like, why we'd have to survey somebody's entire property. You know, we have the easement area. And any structures within, let's say, 25 feet of it. But to go and survey, everybody's like the tennis courts and the driveways and the sheds and, I mean, it's. When, we're not asking for an easement in those areas, uh, but, uh, we've asked to try to. Narrow it down for now to just the properties that are receiving sand, not ones that might get sand in the 30-year. Uh, you know, program window of this project, um, you know, as the contours change over the years, but. The initial work plan, we've asked for that. Um, we've asked for. A simple way to appraise it on a square footage, so, um, and so far, nothing we've asked for, we've gotten. Making our workload daunting. And, uh, I, I don't really know what to say. If, if I had four surveyors and all they did was work on this. You know, and it never, never rained or snowed, it's, it could be, it could be. Four or five years before I can get 500 properties surveyed. I, I don't really know what to do without some relief, so. I don't, you know, I don't have four surveyors that can drop everything and just do this. So it's, it's complicated, I have to say. You can hear my frustration where we're meeting, we have meetings with the feds, we have meetings with East Hampton. Since they're sort of, they're involved as well. They want to see this move forward quickly. And it falls on the town of Southampton to get 500 surveys and 500 appraisals done. And, uh. Jim's working on it, so.
Yeah. Go, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Our trustees have, have the easement on the beaches, I guess, you know, that, that's.
That might play into the valuation, right?
That would be way too simple for the federal.
That would be nice, right?
Our trustees have an easement to cast nets and to collect seaweed. But in the town of Southampton, the public has an easement as well. The town, uh, residents have an easement to pass and repass. Which I think will, will factor in even stronger than the trustee easement. There was a decision, I can't remember what year. But there would, there, there was a, a judge's decision that said that a general right of way to pass and repass exists from the. High Water Mark to the Doomcrest.
Yeah, I believe that was the Dolphin Lane case, yeah. Uh, right, and, and if it's, if that's all it is. It, it might be very helpful for us from a valuation point of view, that if we're not. The county on, on many properties touched structures, you know, some, some, some they had to take whole lots. And quite frankly, it's a lot easier from valuation point of view, from appraisal point of view, to value a full take like that, a whole lot, you know. It's easier than it is sometimes to take partial lot, because then you're starting to get into severance issues. That's one person's idea of severance, compared to somebody else's, and that, that can.
This is a work easement in an area that I believe an easement already exists on.
Right, right, right. It could, right. If it isn't, if it isn't hidden structures and it's just a work easement, it is a permanent work easement, so that, you have to consider that. But, uh, right, it, it might not be, in certain areas, it might not be that complicated, but. Yeah.
They have homeowners who would wanna, you know, spend their own money to do these easements in order to expedite this process as well. I mean, it's in their.
I hope so. I hope people don't fight us, because if they fight us, then we have to go through condemnation. It's a whole. Process.
Yeah.
You know, we have no choice but to get these easements. It's not a, you know. We can get some and not get others. We have, we have to get them all.
Right, hopefully within the next. You know, within the next month or so, we'll have a much better idea exactly what maps we're looking at, you know, as far as the easement.
This is, you know, this is a federal job. And our, the, the little old town of Southampton is being asked to put all the pieces together for a federal job.
Sure, no, it's a, it's a huge undertaking. At, you know, what I, my experience when I was in the, the state, when I was in the Attorney General's Office, you know, you had the state. You had a whole Department, State Department of Transportation with their engineering staff and their outside consultants. You know, did the mapping and, and, and did the hearings and all that. That was a huge undertaking. And then in the Attorney General's Office, I had, in my Albany office, I had people who just were focusing on the. Um, title issues, you know, identifying who, who was to be impacted and that, and that, and that. So, and my office was, we were litigating the cases and we were dealing with the appraisers and getting evaluations, so. But, uh, in this situation, we're gonna be doing everything, you know, and so it's, uh, it's, it is a huge undertaking.
Yeah, that's, is that, that's part of the public trust doctrine, Jim?
The, the, uh, you're talking about the hour, what, what supervisor was mentioning about the right of way, the, the path. Yeah, yes, that's correct. And how that affects the valuation. I mean, that's a, that's a very positive thing for us and that may hopefully help. In the analysis and. We can also hope that the people who have these, who own these properties on, on the oceanfront are, you know. It's, it's very positive for, uh, project for them as well, so maybe, hopefully we'll get cooperation there, but.
Yeah, it's just interesting because that, that actually changes. You know, if you're adding sand or you're, you're considering those things, you change the. Uh, a certain portion of access and a certain portion of ownership. I mean, it's, it's pretty complicated stuff. I.
It can be, yeah, it really can be. Yeah, and, you know, and, and then if you're clipping somebody's property, and if you're actually taking, you know, how that impacts it, you know, it's, it's. It's a whole nother area of, of, you know, analysis and more, but.
John, in terms of big projects too, can, you want to give us any update on the solar for the, uh, the landfill?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we had a, we had a good meeting with the, uh, company that we've hired to do this, so. They had a site visit yesterday and, um, I mean, you know, they, there's a, a lot of work to do, obviously, so. We're in the process of doing that. It's, uh, I've nothing specific to report, except that the company is very diligent. Um, I, uh, I felt really comfortable with them and, uh, what they're proposing to do. And we gotta, now we, uh, you know, it comes down to, uh, working on some of the regulatory stuff and, you know, the interconnections and things like that, so. But it's a, 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 a really well, uh, really good team. I was really pleased with the, with the conversations.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, it's nice. They seem to have very good experience in doing this in, in all other areas, including on Long Island, which is helpful.
Yeah, and the understanding of sort of our unique position here that we have with, uh, our public, uh, authority and, and, uh, be a provider. So, and they've obviously done their homework pretty well, so I feel very confident, uh, this is gonna be a, a, a really good thing.
Any, any, anything else? Any reports from any of the CACs? Anything that the town board needs to know on the hamlets?
I will remind everyone, there is a CAC meeting tonight for Hampton Bays. It is virtual. Covering the Anti-Bias Task Force and infrastructure tonight.
Sure, on the front page of the papers this week, you, you'll all see that the Bridgehampton CAC has decided to become a civic. So they're going that route, so I, I, I wish them well and, you know, of course, we'll work with them in the future.
Right, well, they, I know they have wanted to comment, uh, on planning board and zoning board. And I know Tommy John, you and I differ a little bit, because I think you've always supported the CACs at those other boards, but. They're really constituted to advise us, the town board, a CAC. We put it together to give us. Sort of feedback from the community on things in front of the town board. There's not a, a, a CAC for the planning board or the zoning board. We're not supposed to be telling them. You know, giving our opinion, because we've delegated those powers to them. So it, it seems like the role that they have wanted to play. Has been more the role of a civic, like the Hampton Bay Civic or the Noack Civic, where they're free to. Put whoever they want on the, you know, on their board. where they're free to put whoever they want on the, you know, on their board, and they're free to comment to whatever agency that they want to. So it it sort of matches what they've said they want to do. So maybe they'll be more effective and happier as a civic than a CAC. Some communities have both. CACs and civics, Noack has a civic. I don't even know if, does Noack have a CAC?
They do, yes.
Okay, and Sag Harbor sort of has one too, but Hampton Bay has a civic in a CAC. East Quag has a civic in a CAC. So I think there's roles for both.
I do. So.
I, you know, I think that maybe, you know, I know Anna used to meet regularly, probably like once a month, with the chairs of the CACs. I haven't been doing that, you know, maybe it's something, you know, I should be doing. You know, having a regular meeting with the CACs. You know, if there is a big issue and it needs to be brought to the attention of the board, I think that, you know, these work sessions are good times to maybe bring those things forward, but if you guys you know, think it makes sense for me to have a regular meeting with the chairs, I I'm not sure what that would accomplish, because they all have different you know, issues within their hamlets. But it is something that Anna did, so I don't know if other supervisors did that. I try to get out and about and get a sense of what's going on in a community, and I rely on, you know, all the communications I get from various individuals, including you guys. And I I think we are addressing a lot of the issues that we hear about in the communities, whether whether there are traffic or litter or noise or whatever it might be. But, you know, maybe a civic, in certain ways, is a better a better mechanism for some of the the individuals who've been involved to be able to elevate their voices a little bit. I I don't know.
I agree, and and they and others are certainly free to do, you know, what they want and and what they feel is the best avenue to represent their community and and advance their, you know, what they believe.
So if we can put new people on the Bridgehampton CAC. I think we should sort of clarify what we hope to get from CAC members. You know, maybe it's not clear to them what their role is. You know, should we put people on with various expertise, like, do we want somebody who's got a local business in a community? Somebody who's a parent in a community? You know, somebody who's an environmental, environmentalist. I I don't know, we don't typically do that. We just put on people who say they want to serve and do they always speak on behalf of the community? I I don't really know.
Right, and each, each one of our communities has, has a different makeup, you know, whether it's, you know, the fire department or the historical society or the school district or, you know, various other groups and interests. And I, for me, theoretically, it would be good to have voices from all those different segments of the community on our CACs.
You know, it it seems to me like if we're doing something within a community, if we have a plan, it would be really helpful to get input from the CAC. Whatever, whatever it might be. Certainly, if we're doing comprehensive planning or long-range planning or thinking of rezoning downtown, you know, or whatever it might be, it would be good to have input from a CAC. They seem to be mostly concerned though about the planning board and the zoning board. About a house and whether a house gets a variance. Or whether a commercial plaza or something gets to be built and things like that. I, I, like, I don't, it, I I don't know, I think the civic is a better mechanism to comment on those things than a CAC. So maybe we just need to think about, and I'm not saying we need to do it right now, is what you know, maybe we're not giving clear enough direction to our CACs in terms of how they can best serve the town board. If we were in the middle of a comprehensive plan, boy, that would be amazing, right? We have so much to talk about, what they want their future to look like. But on a day-to-day basis, you know, I I think, you know, we need to figure out exactly the role the CACs are going to play to be helpful in informing our decisions. That's all I'm saying, and I I think it's not entirely clear right now. So I think they feel restricted when they're told we can't comment to the planning board, or we shouldn't comment. They can comment as individuals, but not as an extension of the town board. I I think that's confusing. So.
I agree, and we we had discussed this, and, you know, my view is, as constituents, they have the right, and this is my view. And so, you know, we even need to kind of, I suppose, get on the same page with this, you know, that they can go in public session and identify themselves as a member of a community who volunteers in a group and say their piece on.
Absolutely.
That's, that's my view. I also, as a former member of a number of zoning boards, have had attorneys and I stated this at this board, attorneys will, as part of their applications, will say, well, we haven't heard from the CAC. And so we're assuming that they're on board and support this application. So that's kind of, you know, the other side of that.
Reason too.
You know, so that needs to be clarified as well. So the CACs hear that and they think, okay, we should, we should be giving comment on this and, you know, really weighing in on the particular applications.
So, so like, all right, so we have like a hearing coming up on cultural resources protection law. Right, that does affect parts of Shinnecock Hills area, and there is a CAC. And that would be a great place, I would think, because you know, it's a town board decision. I'd love to hear what they think of that law. You know, I think other things that we've proposed, zone changes and things like that. That would be, it would be helpful, like, you know, you know, we have this, the marijuana issue, and, you know, we have the till the end of the year to make a decision whether we opt out or not. If we decide not to opt out, then we have to figure where a dispensary might go. Be good to have some input from our CACs on what type of zones might be appropriate. So maybe we need to, I think, take questions to them a little bit, things that are pending in front of us and say, you know, do you guys, here's an issue in front of the town board. Do you have any comments? I don't know, it's sort of a different approach to it. But we would have to do that as liaisons, basically to say, okay, here's, here's what's on our agenda that affects your community.
Oh, we just had the conscience point concession RFP. And I actually did that. I forwarded it to the North Sea CAC, because they, they have a lot of strong feelings about Strong's Marina that's in close proximity, so I did forward them the information on that, and I'm hoping they'll go back and take a look at whatever they can look at and get back to me and, you know, let me know their feelings.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
But I I got to weigh in here, because this is this is what we do as liaisons to our CACs. And they also receive site plan information, zoning and planning information that's forwarded to them for projects that are in those areas, for them to comment on and then advise the the board through our CACs. I just, you know, that, that is part of the way it's supposed to work. It's, at least that's.
They're getting routed that information so that they could discuss it with their members.
So they, they could discuss it and then advise the the town board on, on the local issue and the the opinion of the local, the local area. And usually, you get a lot of people that are invited into those that aren't necessarily members. We, you know, we hold our CACs open exactly for that reason.
And Tommy John makes a good point, that any member can go to a zoning board meeting, a planning board meeting, identify themselves as a member of a CAC or any other groups that they belong to and comment.
And it's, it's also part of the responsibility of a chair of a CAC to receive information and to do exactly that. You know, the process is that it is brought to their attention. Sometimes it doesn't work, something might get missed. And, you know, it's incumbent on us to be sure that we bring those things forward to our CACs. And it it works well that way, when it works that way. Right, you know, that's a much longer conversation. I know we're forty-five minutes past our, our schedule, but.
No, I appreciate that, John. And I do, I do want to move on, but I I appreciate also that Tommy John brought up this issue about the Bridgehampton CAC. And, you know, I think it is a good moment for us to say, okay, you know, is there a way for us to do things better? Do we need to reevaluate the role? You know, are civic, are civic groups better in general for these types of things than, you know, a CAC, which is assembled simply to advise the town board? And, you know, we ask a lot of these people in terms of time, and I want everybody to feel like they are listened to, that we we do care. I don't want anybody to feel that they're wasting their time, so. I think it's good that we sort of revisit this issue, I'm not saying today, but you know, maybe as we get into next year and say, okay, what, what do, what do we expect? How can we you know, make these individuals feel the most valued, you know, as participating volunteers in a community? You know, so. You know, we, just something to think about. All right, crickets. So that's, that's okay. All right, so now we do have, if there's no other updates, we'll go on. We do have some executive session items, so just give me one second here. So I have for executive session confidential legal advice, litigation, personnel, and we'll do this through a a phone conference. And we're still you know, doing these work sessions and town board meetings, as you know, via Zoom. I think it still makes sense to do this. Hopefully, we'll get back to in-person meetings as soon as we possibly can. So I will make a motion to end our work session and go into executive session on the items I just mentioned.